That. Okay, all right, like to welcome those online. I don't see a lot of people. This is the Monday. Twelve o'clock, August twenty first for our weekly work session. With me is Commissioner Bollos. To my right, Commissioner Harvey will be here just shortly. We're going to start this meeting this morning. With a discussion action of approval of the minutes for our session held on August seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Let's go approve.
Second.
All of them favor. All right, motion carries. Thanks. We'll now go to our twelve o'clock discussion regarding Cody Wilder, Wilder rezone. Forty-seven hundred West, six hundred South, De Burton, Rick Grover, Charlie Ewer, Gary Myers, I mean. Uh, I miss anybody. Think we got it. So. Steve, you running the show here?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Commissioner, we also have Jim Flint here, the, uh, here for the applicant. So there is a rezone request that has been in probably since April and May. Um, and as you know, we like to, before we bring these to you at a public hearing, we like to talk to you about them in the work session. Um, back in. July, the planning commission made a positive recommendation on the rezone from A one. To R one fifteen. We've seen a lot of these lately out, out in that area going from A one to R one fifteen.
Yep.
And what we as staff and what the planning commission has looked for is. Are they providing good public street connectivity? Are they providing some kind of contribution to open space? Um, is their zoning no more, any more units than it would be under the R one fifteen? Um, and, and smart growth principles in general. Now, in this case, we feel that the developer has, has done that for the most part. But we just wanted to put this on your radar and just, just let you be familiar with it. Also, if you wanted to give us any feedback. Um, also, if you want to give Jim any feedback or, um, there is, uh, I'm going to show the screen. What the proposal looks like, um, asking for, looks like sixty-three lots, they could, under R one fifteen, could actually get somewhere around seventy-two lots. So we're not proposing any more lots than they, than they, than they could under that zoning. But, um, a few things we wanted to go over with you were some of, at least as staff, some of our expectations for pathways. The developer, backing up a little bit, developer has proposed and they're working on getting a, a, a letter from the Parks District. The Parks District is supportive of what they are offering to the Parks District.
Okay.
And so we've got a, a meaningful contribution to open space. Um, if I remember right, it's about twenty-five hundred dollars per lot. To, will be, uh, will be, will be donated to the Parks District. Um, the streets have been laid out as we've asked them to, as they're shown in our general plan. Um, but one thing I've highlighted and, and Jim sent me this document over earlier today and I put some red on here to show you generally what we as staff would expect as well as. What we think the planning commission expects, which is, uh, for a development like this, ideally, we'd like to have a, a pathway. Uh, every about four hundred feet to provide that pedestrian connectivity in between blocks there, which would look something like this. Um, my understanding is the developer is, is hoping to be away from that because they feel the sidewalks are enough and, and I can see. Uh, why they would think that. I just want to bring this up to, so to show you what we, what we could possibly get out of it. Also, there is a canal down here that you may be familiar with. Um, it's not actually on the developer's property. We love for them to be able to work with that owner to see if there's maybe an easement. Uh, we know that there is a canal easement, so we love that developer to be able to work with. The canal, uh, and, and that, the canal company, that owner, to see if they could possibly start building that easement. At a minimum, we would expect maybe just some kind of easement corridor at the back of these lots.
Right.
Uh, but other than that, um, it's been designed how, how we would expect it. The planning commission's comfortable with it. One last thing I'll bring up and, and Gary may have some more, Gary and Jim will probably have some more comments about this. Uh, forty-seven hundred West, as you know, is a U dot road. When, uh, Jim was designing this subdivision, we met with U dot a few times. Uh, went back and forth about this five hundred south connection. They do not like two, these two connections are too close together for them. They, they would prefer this be a cul-de-sac. And through the planning commission, the planning commission actually said, well. Jim, why don't you stub it to forty-seven hundred West? If we need to block it so nobody can access it, we will, but we want that connection opportunity if it's available. And then talking with Gary about it, um, it sounds like there are some, some access concerns where you've got forty-seven hundred increasing speed. So far away from intersection down there.
Yeah.
So we kind of wanted to get your take on if you'd expect that connection to be made, or if you're okay with that connection being made, and maybe it's barricaded off or fenced off. Until we work with you not to put a connection there, but that is a pretty critical connection, at least that was shown on our, on our general plan.
Yeah. So Gary, what's your thoughts?
You know, uh, Steve and I were discussing this this morning a little bit in preparation for this meeting. And what do we measure to that furthest north street? Steve, was that about? Thirty-five hundred feet north of the intersection of twelfth street and, uh, forty-seven hundred west? The challenge I have here commissioners is, uh. It is a posted, I believe, forty-five mile an hour speed road out there. And from that intersection, it doesn't take people long to get up to that speed. So if you have people. Ingressing onto, uh, forty-seven hundred west. You know, on, on an established forty, that I would say within half that distance are already up to forty-five miles an hour. Um, that does present some, some safety concerns. And then obviously, if people are turning on forty-seventh, they're going to want to be able to leave forty-seventh and egress into the. Into the subdivision as well too, right? And so, um, it gets a little bit tricky safety wise. To have that many accesses that frequently out there on the road. Obviously, it's not our road. And so we can't, we can't really dictate what you know, will allow and what they won't allow. Um, but I would echo their concerns for. That many frequent accesses onto that high speedable road. I do, I do see the concern they have there.
Yeah, you got kind of has that policy.
Yeah, aren't they pretty strict on that policy?
They are, they are. They take pretty hard steps.
So it doesn't take, really make sense to have that stuff. I mean, if we don't ever foresee, why are you smiling?
That's the same thing I said, Commissioner.
I know in certain cases, I think of Riverdale Road, um, where they may advise against it or say, we're not going to approve that. But we really want that connection. We're to do it anyway. They, maybe they would, would back off. Another option, I think this was probably Jim's idea was. You could potentially just do a cul-de-sac off of five hundred, but still dedicate some area for the county to have that access if we ever want it. To be there in the future. Um. So a couple of different options there.
Big thing that you now was looking for, they wanted a cul-de-sac with a, a barricaded entry, so you for emergency only. And then they were willing to entertain a full. Not really a full, they wanted to put a median strip down the middle. Everybody kind of was in the opinion that wouldn't be a. Wise idea at all in a rural setting. So.
That works on Washington Boulevard. I'm not sure it works out there.
Yeah. It's like the snow and, um, this thought would be perhaps putting a. If you don't go for a pork chop. Where you have the, uh, kind of goes like this. So you get a right in, right out of.
And that, you're good at talking about median. You're talking about a median when you do that.
Well, it's on the, uh, it's on the. The subdivision side, so it's not down the middle of the road. But, um, planning commission did prefer a, uh, some type of movement there. But, um, I don't think they fully comprehended about the median setup.
I kind of like the idea of the cul-de-sac and then dedicate. The right, a future right of way in case down the road it may work out, but. I don't, if you don't, it's against it. I'm not sure.
I'm not sure. I guess the issue with that then Jim is. You need that second access. That's your second access right now to be able to plat that number of lots. If you don't have it, you can only plat thirty lots.
That's what I was saying. Without that second access, you're going to have people. Real upset when they get backed up to the end of six hundred to get out on forty-seven.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, it's, yeah, that's a lot of traffic to go out on one street.
The driver was kind of a. I think, well, we're not adverse to the cul-de-sac at all and then. And they gated or they barricaded entry, but, um, me Charlie had the, had the most reservations. As far as the West Weaver general plan. They were looking at far more street connections than you know, I was looking at. So it's kind of a disagreement between the two entities.
Um, if commissioners, if you wanted to allow a cul-de-sac there, um, that would be something that you'd have to potentially write into a development agreement. Which we would have anyway with this development, but you could say you can do more than thirty lots. I, I recommend that you don't just for safety reasons, but. Uh, but unless we can get that emergency egress from you up, is some kind of barricade unless we would do a.
They were agreeing.
Crash gate or something like that.
Any kind of.
That might not look great out there, but.
Any kind of thing. I think that's doable.
How do you work an emergency exit?
You just have it, you just have it gated so that in an emergency, the gate can be immediately opened and then.
The.
So it would be barricaded at all.
Yeah, I guess it would just be a gate.
Like a Knox box or an actual crash gate that they push off the hinges then?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't like that.
But that doesn't solve our problem. Within a, you know.
You've still limited that many lots to one single access.
Yeah. I mean, without a full access there.
You're really a number two.
You don't, you really, you still only have one access.
Yeah.
How many lots does this reflect here, Steve?
Sixty-three.
Oh.
They have to do that pork chop option if, if we, I guess, add a, if, if the subdivision approved. Um, you can show that pork chop. Just have to work with you not as the subdivision goes forward.
We're fine with that.
So there's. Well, it's really a U dot decision for you guys to make. You know, I think you're going to need some. Type of slowdown line, lane there. At least I'm, has you done talked to you about that?
That's why I was going to ask commissioners, if, if we did the, the right in, right out only option, does that put the developer on the hook to do? Construct deceleration and acceleration lanes.
I think so.
Yeah. I mean, we talked about the speed. I think you gotta have a decel line, lane, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah. You're not going to get a decel lane right here.
No.
Unless we've got some right of way in there already.
No, you're not.
I don't, listen. I don't. This is you, dog. I, I think the right of way, it is what it is. It's not that forty-seven hundred is going to be a main corridor. And in fifty years, a hundred years, whatever. It'll be like the Carson Boulevard, you know?
Yep.
It could be. So let's do the right thing now and not. I, I don't have an aversion to him having all those lots with, or it's zoned like this at all, but I think we ought to plan for those. Uh. Those things that are, you know, that's what I think.
No, absolutely. So what's on the U dot master plan for that road? Is there enough right of way?
It's, uh, for the, the county shows a hundred and twenty foot wide right of way and, uh, it's Cody and Jim.
We show a dedication of a sixty foot half street.
Sixty foot half street?
Yeah.
Okay.
There is the, you know, it's really issue was just the access with that.
Okay, so right, so we've got enough width to it, hundred and twenty, fifty access. Yeah.
If you want, we, we could still show it stubbed there. And if you want to let. The developer deal with it when they're going through that subdivision process. That's, that's an option.
It'll have to be dealt with though, right at the point where they reach thirty-one lots.
Right.
Yeah.
Is that street on the right hand side forty-five hundred or forty-three hundred?
Uh, forty-five hundred right here.
We've done everything we can to, uh, implement the county's plan.
Sure.
We're just count between the county and you done.
Sure. Well, you done. You know, sometimes they're not that fun to work.
Well, you know, I was very adamant about that little stub road, like. We hate islands, we hate, we don't want, you know, let's just put a temporary barricaded off. Maybe you already had this conversation. I probably does, yeah, in Oregon Canyon. But, uh, so, I mean, he was adamant, they were adamant about that. Just making of that. Emergency access only on that, on this several bit there.
Right.
Just because I hate that.
Right.
Raised medians, you know?
And I don't think that they'll, I don't think that they'll ever get approval for that from you not. At least in my experience with you, Doc.
And they might not, yeah, they might not. And right, I guess right now we're just looking at the concept plan for the rezone purpose and, and maybe if you got says no. Then they show it as a limited access for emergency only or something like that. And I, I think that would. Still meet the intent of our ordinance to say you have to have an, an egress, uh, egress and egress.
For how many lots?
There, I, I think I'd be okay. Rick, what are your thoughts? If, if they had an emergency egress, would that count as their secondary?
It's not really the plan, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you can see they'll, they'll connect other places eventually, right? But.
Right. Well, I'm, I'm okay with, uh, up to the thirty lots. Let them work it out with you, Doc. But yeah, I, I don't think you have, um. You, you limit it with a gate or the crash gate or anything else because you still, you haven't solved your problem.
Right.
I agree, I agree. And with those future accesses, then it's just so hard to tell when those are going to. Actually happen.
Right.
But it shows plenty of, um, additional accesses, you know, when you look at the other connections to second underground. I just don't think we should plan on you not allowing that. And I don't think, if we count that as a second access, that really is a disservice to those homeowners because they really can't access it.
Yeah, it doesn't function.
Right? It's not functioning.
Yeah.
Could you guys get in some kind of emergency easement through other property, even the south or the north or over here? This might be the best option.
That's what I was just.
Where are you looking at? Over on the right to existing forty-four fifty?
Yeah.
The subdivision right here.
Hmm.
Oh, is that little corner piece of property right there?
Nielsen, uh, cool Nielsen.
Nielsen and then K and L, it's a school property to me.
School property. Or you have to cross the school property.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So I think that's a, you, Harvey, okay with that?
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Okay. So where are we with the trail?
So the, I actually want to make sure I understood your thought on the access. You can show it as is, but at, at thirty-one lots, he needs to either make that connection or get a connection somewhere else.
We're having, yeah, we got to have another connection. Trail or anything above thirty lots.
Great.
Wherever that, you know, wherever that may be.
I feel like we're getting penalized for something that's not our fault. It just seems. I mean, we would love to have that full access there. And Charlie is, Charlie's been championing that.
Well, unfortunately, we don't have a lot of. Ability to control you dot anymore. And it's really, it's a state road. So that's, we, you know, we're going to abide by, we're not going to give permission if you don't send a comeback and. Say, look, they can't, you know.
I'm saying if, if it's a secondary access issue. You don't is agreeable to an avenue to have that.
Do you mean it kind of?
Like emergency?
Emergency, oh.
Correct.
Well, that's, that solves their problem, but doesn't solve ours.
And I don't think it solves the problem of the subdivision. Again, I, I just don't think that. You're giving those homeowners two accesses, but they can't use one. It's, they don't have two accesses.
But I'm saying the, the whole layout that we did here was based on the county's plan. If you were to call it the West Weber plan, it would be, uh.
I get what you're saying. All those axes.
There was a lot more than you got. It was a mixing. And, um, we want five hundred south, be aware. You guys want to understand, you know, the county is saying, we went through three to four months of this give and take and, uh. We were, we were told that. Oh, Charlie, Charlie pushed this big time. In fact, Charlie, the way it got left, Charlie was going to go back to you now because they thought the jurisdiction would have more sway than obviously the code year I did it.
Okay.
And, and I guess all comes back to, when do we, when do you guys want to do that? You want to do it at a rezone or you want to do it later on in subdivision? Because it sounds like you could potentially be considered for a rezonary justice plan and defer. Your, your issues with you dot until you're asking for thirty-one lots, right? Do your first phase of thirty. And then thirty-one, you say, okay, show us how you got, it's going to allow you.
But you don't really allow us. I just feel like we're, this is the game lane of the school. This is, there's a lot of, there's a lot of benefit to this layout. And, um, the school's got the property, the.
I gotta.
Schools' property. In fact, the church is already.
This is good. Go up to that map right there. Get that big.
Little, yeah, increase the size of that, Steve.
In fact, the church has even bought this for a seminary already. So this is, there's really no other good way into that property because this is kind of, this is not a good. Avenue. A, a, a full blown. County road going into this is really the pivotally for the school. That's going to be a critical area. I think these people are going to complain profusely. That's the only way.
So what, what road are you suggesting is the name six hundred or five hundred?
Six hundred.
Okay.
Yeah.
What is the intent of forty-six hundred west? Cause that just runs south into that canal there and pretty much dead ends into that.
Connects into, uh.
This is territory, territory.
Six hundred to the main line in.
Yeah. So that'll be the main road into the school?
Yeah.
Is there an access off of forty-five hundred off of twelfth street?
There's a back to that on the map.
Forty-three, forty-three.
Can I?
Yeah.
James, let me see your thing. I'm going to minimize that a little thing here, can I?
Go ahead, help yourself. I got a bad shame.
Yeah, forty-one to forty-three are your only.
Come along.
Forty-one to forty-three are your only access is off of twelfth street.
Okay.
It's, it's a chance twenty-two because. If you're going to, if you're talking about a second access, the potential of having a good road here. Is far better than the school. Going out here.
So it may be something we need to just look into our subdivision ordinance, because I know if you, if you have an emergency egress, it, it does give you. The option to have a couple more lots, just sort of off the top of my head. I don't know what it is. I think it might be like fifteen more.
That would.
Um, but. Yeah, old, I mean, if, if, uh, I guess ultimately you're, if you want. To plat more than thirty lots without connecting to forty-seven hundred or five hundred is, um, you have to get the. I, I just don't see that as a, as an option.
It's West Weaver plan.
We want that general plan?
Yeah.
And then.
It was that originally, we planned for a different road, but the OTD didn't like their proximity. So that's why it was pushed to them.
Well, it was. We're doing everything we could to align the Waver County roads.
Yeah.
It's worth looking at because that's the very blueprint you're trying to follow.
Which, which blueprint?
The general plan. And I, I think you guys, you guys get that, that, uh, Jim basically put the roads exactly where we're asking five hundred goes straight.
Yeah.
So it kind of goes straight.
Sure.
Um, I guess I, I, I don't know how, how else you guys would be able to, to, um, plat more than thirty lots, um.
I think we could get fire marshal approval for the secondary access.
On the five hundred?
Yeah.
Or? Which secondary are you talking about?
Yeah, just the emergency exit lane only.
Okay.
And then we, we would be fulfilling everything we could fulfill as part of the county general plan.
You're asking, you would be asking them to let you plat more than thirty lots?
Yeah.
Because you don't think an access will be made by the time your build out will happen? Right? Sorry, it takes a minute to zoom in here.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, Jim, you're thinking you want to push hard for the right in, right out access on the north leg of your subdivision. Is that correct?
We would welcome that. That's an acceptable compromise.
On five hundred north, right in, right out?
Yeah.
Out on six hundred, the main ride for the school.
It's got to be.
I, I could probably live with that, but I don't.
Too, but I'm not as an emergency access.
No.
But if you don't want to allow right in, right out.
With.
But then they want a median.
They got to, they'll have to have a median.
Or they'll strike it. They'll just strike it as such.
We'd probably do the pork chop thing.
Well, then you have to have a center median on the forty-seven hundred.
Not necessarily, Jim.
Oh, yeah.
That's within the subdivision.
Within the subdivision. I just think the pork chops better than the center median.
I do too.
Especially. Oh, I.
So we pull into the subdivision to the pork chop.
No.
Right in, right out.
No, that's, you know, without the pork chop, you're going to have, won't do much good. And you don't want to, you're not.
It's on six hundred, yeah.
Forty-seven hundred, it'd be a pork chop would be on five hundred.
Right, right, right there.
Six hundred will always be.
Oh, yeah, five hundred. Did, did you say you got, it was okay with the pork chop on five hundred? You right in, right out?
He, he actually was pretty like, put a fence there, put a barrier there or do a pork chop. We just don't want a, a raised island on forty-seven hundred. That was pretty much what, I mean, he was pretty adamant. He's like, I don't want, we don't want a raised island.
No, I don't.
Forty-seven.
I can live with that. I don't disagree. Here's the, uh.
Almost hear that, yeah.
Here's what you know, basically.
As long as it's open, that's what I care about.
Well, yeah.
I don't want an emergency.
Pork chop and a cul-de-sac.
You have to be able to get.
This one you done approved.
Yeah, they, they approved that one with the cul-de-sac.
Could I throw something out for you to think about on that?
Sure.
Joe, uh, Joe Hadley's not here to represent the roads.
Yeah.
Opinion on this. That might get a little bit tricky for snow removal because. Number one, they don't like the raised.
The raised pork chop islands there that that creates, that makes it a little bit more challenging for snow removal. Secondly, when they plow the roads, that leaves them no other option but to push. The road for the subdivision, push the snow out onto you dots highway, which might be a point of conflict with you dot. Um, us bringing our snow out and dumping it over there. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So might get a little bit.
Yeah.
Contentional. Between them and us, I don't know, I don't know, it could be. Raising issues that may not be issues later on, but uh. I'm just thinking about. Unintended consequences in life. And Joe's not here to speak to that.
That's a good point, Gary, thanks for bringing that up, cause I like to think about our guys, that's our ongoing expense right there.
Yeah, I'd like to get Joe's thoughts on, see how big it, well, they don't have snow out there anyway.
As I say, it usually melts within like ten minutes, but.
Run off water. Yeah, no. You know, past nine o'clock, you're fine, in the morning.
There's some truth to that.
Yeah. Well, it sounds like uh, you've got an agreement leash we did for the right in, right out. If you don't approves it, I I'm still, we probably ought to review that with Joe.
Oh, so I'd wanna, I hate to send them down the road.
Yeah.
To do that without.
Joe's input, yeah.
Joe's input, that'd be smart.
Okay.
But I hate to slow bake this though, too, you know, here's the fact, the matter is. Uh. You dot doesn't like this plan, that's all there's to it, right?
No, they just wanna super limit. Not just, they they wanna super handcuff the county. The county has several roads planned in here, they got a seven hundred.
The more, the more they, we feed off of our subdivisions onto their state roads, that becomes a safety hazard for them, and so. When they did, they do this all over, especially with commercial, they're like six hundred feet, they, I've had them tell banks, we're not letting you move it three hundred feet because it was too close, so. This is not unusual request from you dot.
No, so and it's probably good planning, so we don't end up with the Harrison Boulevard where you got fifteen, every, every block and every. A half block coming into it, right?
Yeah, exactly.
But it's just. Like it's hard enough for me to swallow, cause they allowed it up there, of course, they didn't think about it back then, did they?
They didn't think much about it. Wasn't that many people?
The Washington Boulevard is another example, just in case you haven't been on Pangree or some of these others later.
I have, I tried to avoid you.
Jim asked me to show the general plan really quick, it's uh, it's a lot. Loading here.
Well, you know, keep in mind, Jim, too, you know, you bring up the general plan, and that that was the general plan. But it's still just a plan until we go for a rezone, the reason for that is that, okay, this is what it could look like, but all the things have to line up. Connectivity with the roads, again, trails was a big portion of that, parks was a big portion of that. And obviously, because of this location, you does your partner. So you better go have some discussions with your partner and see what you can work out, but just because it's in the general plan. Doesn't mean you, anybody can walk in and get an RE fifteen or an R one fifteen. Um, you know, we we made that pretty clear to, at least everybody I've talked to.
Where's this?
Is that right, Rick?
Where's that problem, but take your mouse on that problem, it's right there.
I sent them after, where's the map?
Well, it's one of our maps we've been looking at though, Jim, that is one of the maps that I wanted to see.
Charlie had showing all the streets.
Oh, I mean, it's shown pretty much here, you're talking about the street regulating plan?
Yeah, show them. They're, they're cutting out a lot of streets on you that Charlie was really counting on, seven hundred, five hundred.
Oh, you just show what you got is doing?
Yeah.
We may just have to work with them.
Yeah, I mean, believe me, for the last five months, you know, we, I feel like we've done our due diligence, like working with the county and their roads. But you got with their roads, you know, our access points, and then we've had multiple conversations with them as far as you dot goes. On this access, you know, to be able to put this many blocks in this subdivision. And we've moved roads, I mean, we've changed it, I don't know how many times, you know, just to conform, to make it. Like know that we're willing to work with. Everybody, you know, but at the same time, it's like, okay, so what point? Are we able to move ahead, you know, with it, whether I hate the islands too? I mean, I'm a retired state trooper, there's nothing I hate worse than islands, you know, I mean, everything. I I get that, like snow piles, and I get that, cause we work with them all the time, but I, I mean, what other? Uh, what other option do I have?
So, yeah, and I would to that, I would say that's, that's part of the rezone process, we like to make sure that we get it right the first time. I mean, we did all these things, and we definitely appreciate you.
And listen, this is, this is part of the pain of pioneering. I'll tell you what the right answer is, you guys go away and come back in twenty five years, and we'll have a lot better, easier answer for you. But it's a part of the pain of pioneering, and that's, that's kind of. We'll work, we'll get there, but yeah, that's. So let's go back there, so put that down, you Jim, you've got your roads there, now there, there's. Nine, eight, seven, six, five, and then.
Forty. So they wanna eliminate eight hundred, seven hundred, five hundred.
You done this.
You got wants to eliminate those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we, you can see our layout exactly parallels. I appreciate it.
Yeah. And and uh, so they've got six hundred going into the school.
Five hundred coming across.
Why? You know, quite frankly, you got two school entrances, that doesn't hurt you.
I don't know how we tell you, you don't hang it in their ear, but makes sense.
Talking this one? Yeah, and they're both coming through our subdivision.
Well, commissioners are probably.
Yeah, I like the idea of the two accesses to school, but.
Me too.
We're probably a little bit over our time, I wanted just really quick touch on trails.
Yeah.
I wanted Cody and Jim to be able to make a case to you, as staff. Our code talks about providing these public benefits at a rezone level, we feel like. Trails are a good idea, we would expect to see some kind of trail corridor over here, if the developer can't work with. This owner to help install some of that trail along the canal. And then our code also talks about for these connectivity incentivized subdivisions, making sure that a. Some kind of trail is provided every four hundred feet mid-block. Um, it doesn't have to be that way, you can approve a concept plan like this, this does have good street connectivity, they are still providing a public uh, open space benefit. And there's gonna be five foot sidewalk everywhere, but you could, you could get, yeah, both sides of the road, but um.
So go back to that canal.
It's on the bottom.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause the canal is just on. The south side, right? Well. I anytime you have a connect canal, I like the idea, that's a great spot to have a future trail. I don't really care that much about the standard one.
The one intersecting the blocks? Yeah, I don't care about that one either.
Yeah, I mean.
If I was gonna see a canal, quite frankly, I'd just assume, go down the middle, go this way.
What?
Connecting the other trail, the north and south that way.
And you have that with the sidewalks.
Yeah, so you've got that going into the. The canal property.
Right.
Yeah. And the canal is buried now over here.
But the canal runs.
Yeah, here's their canal, I forget the trees right there, but it's buried now, and it's all on Turkey Farms on top, like they actually can come from. Forty seven and just do a nice walk path all the way down now.
Well, that's what I, that's what I envision is. Put a walking path, tie that in with a future park, and you could take people, you know, as far east as you could go.
Would you, when it comes to this subdivision, yes, the canal is not on this property.
No.
Um, would you recommend, or would you like to see some kind of trail easement along the back of these properties, in case we don't know how wide?
Do we need it?
I think it's recommended, um, I, we'd have to see exactly, we need a survey of the other property to the south, to see whether buried canal is.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt us to keep an easement there.
We could vacate it.
We could vacate it, if it turns out that with Cherokee Farms.
Yeah.
For safety purposes. For safety purposes, but I don't, yeah, I I don't wanna prove that and then find out, look, if we had an extra five feet, we'd have a great trail.
It's easier to vacate it in the future.
Easement. Cause it would dead end into this house, it's here. Like, I don't know. That's his property.
That's Blanchard's, isn't it?
Um, no, that's. Ideally, I'm gonna go out on a limb here, i- ideally, West Weaver, he and Lou. Would be used. As bulk, a trail. Over the sixteen pipeline canal.
That's what I think would be the best, I don't, I don't disagree with that. But. I feel that was to happen.
Who's Lou?
See you, Lou.
Hey, Lou. We need to get rid of Lou too, I mean, it doesn't matter, so you're okay with no, you're okay with no corridor down the middle, but preserve an easement?
Yeah, I'm okay, I'm okay, but I think we gotta preserve that canal for right now.
And it is, so our fence, so it goes canal, and then there's like a, I don't know, probably ten or fifteen feet from the canal to my fence. So I mean, there's, you could even do a path. On the canal to the fence, it's still on that, on still on his side, you know? And you look at this, where this sits, so the canal is buried. Currently, I guess that would be it, right?
Yeah.
So you have this, there's still, oh, maybe it's twenty, twenty five feet to my fence line, past the canal. Before you even come over our property, so I don't, maybe reissuing all of. These permits, all this stuff you don't, you gotta redo this.
We need to talk to the weed board too, about all them Russian olive trees in there.
How many of those Russian olives are there?
It's just over four hundred and bananas, like it's slipping right there.
Yeah.
I mean, might as well. Is the ground flat across yours up to the canal, or is there a slight depression where those Russian olives are? It's like a water ditch, just from like uh.
Well, that's probably something we need to get boots on the ground to look at it, there's that much space, that may not be necessary. You wanna take a look at that, give us a recommendation?
Sure.
Before we pull the trigger on that. Yeah, if you get that much space, and then. If. You'll talk with Joe and just see if he has any issues with that. Major problems with that right in, right out.
Okay.
You want us to go to you now?
Yeah, I'm not, see Carlos anytime real soon, well, maybe real soon, but, yeah, you go talk to you now.
Sorry to send you back.
Yeah.
And show them.
Yeah, I mean, that's uh.
Come quickly and section out tough Eddie on that, just allow the deal.
Yeah.
We've done a lot of nice things for them lately, it's about time that they just.
Call it a favor.
Yeah.
Call it a favor, yeah. Okay, anything else? Steve, is that?
It helps.
Answer all your questions.
Yep, thank you.
Hey, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We need, we do though, who, who do we need to talk to at the weed board, I need to talk to. I wanna get those Russian olive, that's a menace to society.
Bart.
Yeah, we can talk to Joe or Bart.
Or Bart.
Right now, whoever that old, that property owner is on that side with all them Russian olives.
Russian olives are a bigger issue. We got star thistle, we got uh, Dyer's wool. We got tumbleweed, we got.
Hey, I'll reach out to Blanche for you, Dan, you know?
Oh, yeah.
You can tell him that's what it takes to be.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Sorry to bring it away, don't go up on your day.
I'll be back up.
Have any more conversation like. And. You know, last conversation I had was that if the school district doesn't approve their. Hello, please sit down.
Doctor Lancaster, yeah?
Oh, okay.
I haven't met you.
Mary Ann, who's the chief of the uh, juvenile division? How you doing, Jim?
You should, you should have, uh, my bitch should be, I was just quite a juvenile delinquent. Yeah, most of these laws are in place because of my uh, heritage.
We can add your photo to our conference room downstairs.
Yeah.
How are you?
Huh?
Oh, no, me, not, not the other Jim.
The other Jim.
The other Jim with one finger, well, one finger off.
Yeah. He was. When I, when I, when my kids were uh, young, uh, and they were pouting, I would say, okay, I'm gonna. I'm gonna count to three, and you're gonna smile, and I would go one, two, two and a half, and then they would start smiling. Anyways.
All right, all right, we're now at our two thirty, excuse me. Twelve thirty discussion regarding public defender budget.
All right, uh, cut right to the chase. You uh, you're familiar with what's going on uh, statewide? As far as public service attorneys. Uh, we, we come to you with two different proposals, we understand neither one is very uh, um. Appealing, one would be a proposed uh, wage increase. Uh, to bring us in line with uh, the county attorneys and uh, not quite in line with the rest of the state, but. Uh, as close as we feel that Weaver County could come, uh, so the, that would be a wage uh, increase proposal. Um, the second page. Is an alternative, and uh, Gage, you were in our board meeting when we discussed this.
Yeah.
And that would be a uh. A retention bonus. Uh, proposal, uh, to answer one of the questions that you had at that time. You said, well, what's to stop somebody from getting a retention bonus on Monday and then taking another position on Tuesday? Uh, I talked to Steph at the clerk auditor's office, and she indicated that. They could do that if it's agreed upon on a pro rata basis, so it factors in to someone's. Thinking of how to uh. You know, if they're going to take another position, because they would, they're, they would have to factor that in.
Right, right.
Uh. The, the big problem that we're facing is the uh, that we're being paid less than what everybody else in the, in the state is. Uh, we've talked about the AG uh, creating this havoc by their huge pay increase. Uh, Utah County, Salt Lake County, Davis County have all followed suit. Um, I know the county attorney's office has been feeling it too, they've uh, they've gotten the. Uh. They had several of their attorneys that were looking at positions, different positions with. Uh, the attorney general's office, or um, I understand there's about twenty five. Uh, slots with the uh, district attorney's office in Salt Lake. And so, uh. Uh, and it's similar with, in the public defender field, uh, there's, uh, everybody is looking for public defenders. Uh, Utah County is, Salt Lake County has slots open. And uh, when you have a person who can go down to Utah County or Salt Lake County uh, to, and we have people that are working for us now. That live in Salt Lake County. And when they could just go south instead of north, uh, for, you know, twenty to thirty, forty thousand dollar pay increase. It's hard, uh, we have been doing everything we can to create the culture to make people wanna stay, and I think we've been successful at that, um. I've talked to a lot of my people, uh, while some of them have uh, been looking. Uh, everybody says that they're, they're, they like working here in Weaver County, they like the culture and the atmosphere that we've been building here. Um. And I've been talking with Scott uh, about this, I understand the, the situation the county is in financially. Uh, just to give you a graphic, if you go to the third page over. Uh, that says twenty twenty three salary comparisons. Um, that's what the salary is right now, uh, the blue line, the, or the green dots is uh, public defenders. And the red line or the red dots is the county attorneys, that's what it, that's the disparity right now. Um, if you uh, factor it, go to the next page, factor in the. The disparity uh, with the wage increase that has been agreed to. Um, for the county attorney's office. Um, the disparity becomes even greater. Um, with our proposal. You go to the very final page, you can see that everybody's brought similarly in line. And so, um, everybody will be starting from equal footing. Uh, you know, I understand and, and talking to Scott that, you know, it's hard to. You know, some people say, well, let's see your P and L, what's your P and L? Our P and L is the, the, the lives that we change and the lives that we save, I think the fact that we have our forensic social work division started up. Uh, we just added uh, another person uh, from, with IDC funds. Uh, and he's twenty five years with the forensic social work division at Utah, in Salt Lake County. And so, uh, we are going to see, I think, incredible things over the next year. Uh, the, the only P aspect of profit that we could save is the number of jail days that we're able to save. That's going to require a comp, uh, a uh. Cooperation with the county attorney's office and the judges. Right now, the judges have been very favorable about considering release of people pre-trial into an inpatient treatment facility or other prob, uh, appropriate facility. That's business specifically targeted for that individual, uh, Daniels put together, they um, call it the. Coordinated. Uh, Daniel's put together, they, um, call it the coordinated, uh,
Coordinated Treatment Releases.
Coordinated Treatment Releases. And we have our attorneys starting to work, uh, with the judges and the prosecutors for that. The key is to get people out of the jail as soon as possible and into treatment as soon as possible. Uh, sitting in jail does absolutely nothing except create a better criminal. Um, and I think a lot of people, even the, the, uh, I think, uh, you'll talk to the sheriff and he'll agree with you.
Well, there's a way not to have to sit in jail.
Don't commit a crime. I agree. No, no, I, I, I agree, Jim. Um, and if I could wave a magic wand and, and make everybody crime free, that, that would, I would do that.
Hard to dispute that.
Yeah.
Age old problem.
And unfortunately, uh, there's a lot of factors that, that go into it. Uh, the drug epidemic. Um, is that, we have Daniel, uh, because of the opioid settlement funds that we were able to receive. Um, the mental health, uh, problems that come with the drug epidemic and, uh, with, uh, a million other, uh, sources, family, uh, dysfunction, things like that, generational things. Uh, and that's one of the things, that's why I'm so excited about this, uh, uh, coordinated treatment release program. And hopefully we'll be able to get the judges to agree to it. I know the presiding judge, Judge Hyde, is excited about it. And a few of the other judges that I've talked to are excited about it. They're setting aside a whole day, uh, uh, presentation, uh, that Daniel will be doing. Uh, our juvenile, um, court, we also have a social worker, um, from a funded by a pilot program from the state that's working with the juvenile court, uh, teams. And, uh, they're doing some fantastic things, uh. The increase of, uh, funds that we've received from the IDC for additional attorneys has, uh, shown a great deal of benefit going from two attorney, public defenders to three in each court. Uh, there are more, um, more, uh, cases, uh, suppression cases that are being filed and one, more trials that are being done and one. And I know that doesn't sound good to, uh, somebody saying, well, why do, why should we get excited about, you know, a try, the prosecutor's losing a trial. Um, it, it, all this flows downhill. We have to increase if, if you, if you don't hold everybody's feet to the fire according to the law. Then, uh, things get sloppy. Your, your law enforcement's get sloppy. They'll push things through that they probably shouldn't, or they'll shortcut investigations. And that will result in not only trials, but it also result in civil lawsuits against the county. Uh, I think the counties paid, uh, a lot of money in the past for, uh, civil lawsuits for nineteen eighty-three. Uh, that's a federal statute, nineteen eighty-three violations. And so by, by holding everybody's feet to the fire, we're raising the bar as far as the quality of, uh, law enforcement and the quality of the prosecutions and also the quality of defense. Uh, it'll, it'll raise all the ships at the same time. So, um.
Okay, so what you're asking for is ongoing?
So he's got two proposals. The ongoing proposal's four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars basically of ongoing funding. That would be the first one. And that was if we were to do everything and fix it right now, that would be the twelve month cost. The second proposal would be a basically a one-time bonus, depending on how you calculate the one-time bonus. There would be a hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand dollars. Basically, it makes it the same. So let's say we don't get the ongoing increase until January, the one-time bonus would be essentially to backtrack that as though we had given it today.
Scott, where's the total on the first?
The total wasn't on this page. I got an electronic version, and so I, four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Four hundred and thirty-two, rounded to four thirty-two.
And how much is the one time?
The one time is, um, I believe three hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand for one year, or excuse me, for a six-month bonus. So, and then three hundred and six, and then those totals are on that second page.
Yeah, so a hundred and fifty to get us to the end of the year.
Fish, right? I mean, we're already, it would be a little less than that now because the further we wait, the cheaper.
What I don't see on here, Jim, is that discussion we had as far as where we could pull some money out of.
Okay, uh, yeah, and I apologize.
Which I thought was like seventy grand.
Uh, well, uh, for the rest of the year, uh, it's probably about forty-six. Uh, we have, uh, one contractor that's giving up the Morgan contract, which by the way, we've given Morgan a ninety-day notice that we're going to terminate that contract because their caseload is, uh, more than doubled. And, uh, and we've told them that unless they can substantially increase that, it's not worth it for us to do. Um, he also, uh, gave up one of the drug court contracts. I'm taking Morgan until, uh, we're done, I think November second. Uh, one of the drug court contracts that he was receiving, uh, funds for, uh, Nathan Carroll is taking that over. And he's one of our full-time attorneys, and so he's going to save us the money there. Uh, mental health court, uh, Amy Fowler is going to be taking that. She's another one of our full-time attorneys. And so she's taking that, uh, without additional compensation. Uh, we have Weaver Justice Court. Um, the attorney gave that contract up, uh, at the end of February. Um, and, uh, and so, uh, I've been doing it, uh, taking care of Weaver Justice Court as well. Uh, and so that's something that we won't have to go out and contract for again. So those, those, uh, I think till the end of the year, it's about forty-six thousand dollar savings. We also, uh, we were asked by, uh, Scott to look at our budgets and say, where can you cut? Unfortunately, most of our budget is, uh, salary and benefits. But we were able to, uh, identify, uh, probably, uh, let's see, ten thousand in, uh, capital expenditures. Uh, and, uh, another fifteen thousand in travel and, uh, training.
Travels, I remember.
Yeah, training and travel.
So roughly forty-six grand.
Uh, forty-six, yeah.
So what's, give me their numbers on the total budget that we have approved. And how much of that budget are we getting from IDC, the state?
So the total budget for the public defenders is about two point seven million. Um, well, excuse me, that's the net, so total expense is three point nine million minus a million two in revenue that we're getting from grants. That's based off of budget and numbers.
So the grants, you're talking about IDC?
IDC, yeah, IDC.
Okay. That's the only place we get other revenue.
Um, very minimal, drug court fees, indigent fees, and we're talking thousands.
How does that compare when, versus when we were on a contract basis?
So it's true that contractors are cheaper. Uh, I, I mean, if I, I mean, we were discussing this and we, we don't yet have enough history to know how much better an employee is versus a contractor. Because I mean, and I, we were talking to Jim, is if we can get the same output through a contract as we could, a, an employee and the outcomes were the exact same, it'd be a no-brainer. It would be contracts. They're about, they're sixty-seven cents on the dollar, right? It's an extra thirty-three cents to have an employee versus a contractor. The question is, is on the backend, are we getting the savings? That, yeah, it's because we knew that it would be an initial investment. The question is on the backend, are we reducing the amount of time people are in jail? Are we reducing the, the number of appeals that we're having for ineffectual counsel? I mean, you remember that one with Mr. Newton? That was a very, very expensive case and it drug on forever, you know, so.
Still dragging on.
So, so that, that's the question.
Right, that's.
I mean, quick win, if we just wanted to save money.
It's hard to put a dollar and cents figure to it, just because we, of everything, reduce jail time. Yeah, unknown liability issues, which I agree. So, uh, again, you know, my opinion is you guys do a great service for the county. I think, you know, your people there, the end of the day, I, it appears, again, I just say it appears that the results are, are there. Where I have my issue is, you know, we, when I say we, the county, we got involved with this a great deal because the state, you know, said, look, you guys, you know, jump into this and we'll support you with funding because we can make it work. So it's not you, it's the state, um, that we need to have some discussions with.
Certainly.
And I'm not going to solve that. But because of that, I would like the opportunity to deal with the state. So my proposal would be what I would suggest we do, um, is, and, and I understand where you are right now in comparison to what we did for the attorneys. I would like to do one time.
The retention.
The retention bonus through January, gives us time to go down and talk to the people. See, we need to just kick another million bucks out of them, frankly. That's where we're at.
Originally, when this was pitched to me, then let me just, I want all three of you to hear the same, hear the same thing. Your cost, now, there, there should be absolutely no question that this county, Weber County, is invested in public defenders. By altering this building and, and, and all the additions that are down there. You guys, the space that was originally planned versus the space you have now is a lot bigger. We've, uh, we've dealt with, uh, our partner on the, in fact, we've ended up buying the building, not just because of you, but that was a factor in it.
Sure.
We have made a substantial investment. To that point, that's one-time money. But to that point, the ongoing funds are more than four times what I was told they were going to be originally. Four times. I'm just telling you what was reported to me versus what they are today. Now, that could be that you've grown or the needs have been greater. There could be a lot of factors going with that, but this is, it's, this is originally, I, it was a wonderful idea and it's still a wonderful idea. We just didn't know the cost. The state promised all this other stuff. They're not keeping up. They're not keeping pace. And not to sound cheap, but they've also caused the problem. And I'll say this out loud. I wish Sean Reyes was in the room. Mismanagement from his department has caused this problem.
Agreed.
I can't wait till he calls me for his support. Within, it'll be in the next couple of months. And I got a couple of words for him and it's not happy birthday. But they'll probably be in Hawaiian, so we'll understand him. So I'm just telling you, that, I've got, those are my feelings. I've got some strong feelings. I'm mostly there by supporting the end of the year deal, so to get, to take the immediate problem away. But I've got some, some big stuff with the state. If they don't kick in another million, boy, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have a hard time supporting, supporting this moving forward. That, at least a million, maybe two. They're, they're way behind. And that, and so the argument may be the persuasion, whoever decided to give Reyes all that money ought to probably think about the other side, just like we are now. That's how, that, that's really how it ought to be. That's all there is to it.
Well, as far as the projection, I think, uh, what was your original projection, uh, Scott? I think the original projection, we're really not that far off from what the original projection was. As far as costs, I thought it was only three or four hundred thousand dollars off.
You're a lot, no, no, no. You're a lot farther. This projection came, first off, it came from Brian Barron. Then it, we got Scott involved. Um, the original, original projection is before Scott's, so.
Oh, okay.
That was Brian.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't disagree with that.
Okay.
And again.
But at least you know, I'm, I'm being very direct, very firm.
And listen, no, and I, and I agree totally that the, I mean, it, it just irks me when I hear the state brag about a four hundred million dollar surplus. Um, the obligation, according to the Supreme Court, is that it's the state's obligation. And all they've done over the years is delegate that down to the counties.
Which, which is not unusual for them.
Yeah, yeah. Another unfunded deal for us.
So. Where are you?
I'm, I'm where you are, Gage. I would like to go through the end of the year.
So let's go through the end of the year.
We're gonna look at this anyway.
We're gonna look at it. And, and you guys, when I say you guys, Commissioner Bowles and Harvey, you're gonna have the opportunity to talk to Speaker Wilson this Friday. He's gonna make a visit up here. I would, I won't be here, but I'd suggest you, and I've talked to Schultz about it, who will more than likely be the speaker here in the next couple of months. Um, I'm gonna go down and meet with him personally. You should bring this up to Brad. You say, look, before you leave, um, and before Weaver County's gonna get behind you much, we need, we need your help with a couple of issues. This being, in my opinion, we got two, and these are both something we've dealt with. This and the C J C. You know, the ARPA, the amount that they dictate to us that we've now spent, thank goodness we had the ARPA funding. But the, you know, this is just another example where the state gives something, re- requires something, but then doesn't hold up their end of the bargain. Whatever that bargain was.
Can I just ask a point of clarification? I understand that, that the county, uh, attorney's office was granted the, the, uh, pay increase.
That's correct.
Uh, and, uh, was that retroactive July first? Do you know?
I don't remember what day it was, but it was active. It was effective the next pay period after they.
I don't, no, it wasn't July first. It was whenever we.
I think it was the first of August.
It's gonna go, that this paycheck.
Okay, so it went into effect two weeks ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if I could on this commissioners, I would say, I agree with the decision not to do the ongoing funding right now because I want to have this discussion in context with the whole compensation discussion with the budget. And if we need to do adjustments to tax revenues, this is a good example to show reasons why we need to do it. In terms of the one-time budget, I don't have any issues doing the one-time retention bonus, but I would like to go back and just look at the calculation because I don't want to essentially promise this is what the end compensation result's gonna be. So I would much rather look at this. Even if we have to whittle down the one-time bonus a little bit, I'd rather them get more money than, than, than be promised more money and then not be able to deliver on that, if that makes sense.
The, the, the numbers that we have there, uh, we received from Sarah.
Yeah, I think this is Sarah's numbers, aren't they?
This is what the market would be, but I don't know that we're going to be able to get everybody up to a hundred percent.
Right.
So that's the question. So if we're only able to get eighty-five percent of the way there with everybody, looking at the county as a whole.
Right.
Depending on what you guys decide to do in compensation. That's why I'm saying, I don't want to, I don't want to promise you guys a hundred percent and then come back and say, actually, you're only gonna get eighty-five percent. Um, so that, that, I just would.
And, and, and I just wanted to tell you, and this is not a, not a threat or anything, but I'm, I'm telling you that every day I'm, I'm stroking my people and telling them, just be patient, the county's gonna take care of us. And, uh, because I've already had one of my contractors apply for another position. Uh, he's told me that he's going to stay with us. Uh, I have one contractor that has indicated that he's going to give up his contract because of health issues. I'm trying to bring somebody in under his, uh, contract to save some money there. Uh, I had one guy that was already turned us down. I have another attorney that says, well, send me a copy of the contract so I can look it over and I'll get you my counter proposal, you know, so he's going to approach this as a negotiation. It is very, very hard to find any replacements. And you could talk to the county attorney's office. Uh, they're gonna have, uh, uh, one of my attorneys has said, oh, I could go to work for the county attorney's office and make more than what I'm making here. Because of what the county attorney's now offering as far as, uh, salaries. Uh, they're, they're advertising right now to replace, uh, Patrick Tan, who went to, uh, Roy. So, uh, and that's, that, that's what we're facing.
We understand the issue. We under, we understood that before we.
I understand.
A bit of good information. We, we're sad to lose Patrick. He's such a great prosecutor, but we did open up the advertisement. And we had four applications. And so it's working.
Yeah, yeah. So, no, we appreciate you, your team, you know, you're knocking your head, you know, against the wall a lot of times, I know with that, with this process, but, uh.
But I love it. I love my people.
You know.
And we, we're, we're making the changes. Uh, next, when we do our final budget proposal, I'm going to show you the, uh, the P and Ls. I'm going to show you the pictures of the, the lives that we've been able to save and I'll show you some of the lives that we lost.
And I think that's really what, you know, we've talked, you're not the only department, by the way, that we're
Certainly.
Looking at for answers is, uh, you know, what are the services that you're providing? Are we, for the taxpayer of Weaver County, are we getting the services that they're paying for? Or can we get them somewhere cheaper? Or do we even need to provide it? In this case, we have to provide it. So this is not a question, do we provide it or not? We either provide it with you or we provide it with contract services. Uh, I believe that you're right. I think we get a better service from what you do with the public defenders than we do with contracts. And again, the market is what the market is. If we went back to contracts, you know, we didn't have people say, you know, all of a sudden now be two or three times what they were when we entered into this before COVID.
Right.
So, I don't know. All right, anyway.
So is there anything specific? So I guess what I would request is to go back and work with you on the one-time budget. We'll update the calculation based off of the number of pay periods that are left. And then I wanted to put a safety margin factor in there. I mean, so if instead of getting a seventeen thousand dollar bonus, I got a fifteen thousand dollar bonus, would that materially affect? And I'm not trying to nick. Thirty-seven dollars an hour if we're only gonna get thirty-six.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That does.
So I, and.
Of course, don't make a commitment till.
No, 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 no. I, 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 I will never do that till. I listen, I listen to him more than I listen to you folks. He's the one who controls the purses.
For a good reason.
Yeah, yeah. So he's a good man. Uh, I'm, I'm always glad to work with Scott, so.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
We'll work on this and we'll get some language from Crockett too to put a provision like so.
Do a pro rata. We don't have, you know.
Yeah.
Thank goodness, we had formerly in ARPA, we didn't really be in.
C J C and then the, uh.
Public defenders.
Yeah.
He won't, he probably does not necessarily want to talk about it, but that's, I think that's appropriate.
You bring it up. Are we still being recorded, Commissioner?
Yes.
Is there, we can mute it for a moment? Huh? I'm not gonna talk about anything that's inappropriate.
I trust you. I trust you.
What does that mean?
So this will be our one o'clock discussion regarding the jail bond. Who's gonna take the lead?
Okay.
John, go ahead.
Commissioners, we're glad to be here. We had a finance meeting last Monday morning. And in that, we discussed right at different parameters on the resolution you have seen and then discuss tomorrow in the commission meeting. At that point, you'll bring to light diversity. I think the sheriff would be there. Anybody else if you wanted to have them contribute in the meeting or just have them available tomorrow at ten in your commission meeting? Today's meeting is just kind of a reading meeting. We confirm that these are the, this is the path you want to be on before you go to tomorrow's committee meeting.
Okay.
If you're comfortable with the.
Who's making the presentation?
I'm available.
All right, you're probably the guy I'm looking at.
Yeah, so I think before we leave today, I'm going to give the sheriff some guidance as far as wanting to speak for a lot of points and how long. And anyways, it will also be a better day.
Okay.
The meeting last Monday, you said basic parameters are in the document that the bond council put together and the financial advisors advised on the dollar amount. Fifty-four dollars per household is where we are right now in a ninety-eight million dollar bond that goes for twenty-one years. And.
And we, so we secured those numbers.
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe we can have Jonathan Ward to speak to that for just a minute and see if you have any questions with the numbers.
Okay, Jonathan A. Questions, updates, anything we should know about before tomorrow's meeting?
Well, the tax impact numbers that are in the resolution are based on current market conditions, current valuation assumptions. That's, that's really the best we can do. The legislature didn't specify in the statute that, that we had to assume certain things, do certain calculations in a, in a certain way. So this is the way we traditionally provided tax impact analysis for elections. And regardless of that tax impact language that showed up in the ballot, these would be general obligation bonds that are unlimited as to tax. So if all the valuations dropped, everybody moved out of Weaver County, whoever was left would be responsible to repay the debt and raise the rate to whatever level was necessary to repay the debt. Correct? So I think just be aware of that.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a general obligation pledge, the best credit that you can offer to investors across the country that what you'd expect the lowest interest rates. When all said and done, and I think that's about it.
Do we have an idea on what the interest rate may look like at that point in time?
At that point in the future, you know? No, but we were assuming about, it was about three point six percent ish.
Okay.
When we ran the analysis, that's about the current market borrowing cost right now.
That's, that's a pretty good rate compared to what?
Well, I'll say.
Market is in general for bonds.
Yeah, we're.
That's because of our credit.
We have a real solid credit rating. Tax-exempt bonds are going to be a little lower interest rate than taxable obligations. We, we have seen interest rates go up over the last two years. And that being said, we're under four percent and that's not bad.
That's, that's not bad at all. Okay, so Sheriff, you're gonna do the, tell your story. I don't know how, how much detail you want to go into. That's gonna be.
What would you like?
Up to you.
Commissioner.
Well.
What time would you like me to take?
You take as much time as you need. So up, up to.
Up to an hour and a half.
No, up to twenty minutes. A little more people. Twenty, thirty minutes, the most, I would say.
Seriously?
Yeah, how much time do you need?
Well, you know.
Twenty, go with twenty.
How much time do you need?
I mean, I, I don't think, I don't think the purpose is of tomorrow's meeting is to sell, to market this. I think the purpose is, and this is Commissioner Bowles' portfolio, is to basically make people aware, here's the need. So what, if it was me, I'd concentrate on the need, why we need it. And basically, the, the time that's been spent with hundreds of people, hours, looking at other options, looking at consequences, I say, if we don't do this, i.e., you know, we went, I'd bring up what we did with the medical. That, that's be- because of what we've seen happening out there in the environment, that we could end up spending more dollars in the future on defending ourselves, lawsuits, everything else. That's just the way of, way of the world. And then, then I just kind of make the, the presentation on, we're looking at a X million dollar bond, twenty, whatever the facts are on that. I don't think we have to go into.
Not at this point.
At this point, time, a ton of information. But I, I would stress, I'd start with, you know, why, why are we here? Here because we have a need and then go from there. And what, what we're gonna do, and obviously you want to bring up, you know, here's what we are, here's what we intend to do with that money if it passes. And then you, and you know, then you always want to bring a benefit into that closing. So here, what's the benefit to the average taxpayer of Weaver County? In other words, why, why the heck are we doing this? Who else?
It's great.
Harvey?
Great.
You're the salesman.
No.
But I heard you were a nanny.
Data, data, data.
I was just.
So you, you know, it's your show, you decide. But I think, I don't think we try to sell, I don't think we try to make the sales presentation with this. Kind of, it's, to me, it's more factual. Here's what Chief Reese can be right there. Look, here's what we've got. Here's where we've been over the last, since, you know, you want to bring up, you might, I'd say bring up a little history. The, the last time we did any major, when we did the pods, it's been how long? Thirty years?
Twenty years.
Twenty?
Two thousand.
All right. And obviously, the public safety, we, where we are dealing in today's world, has changed in twenty years drastically. Mental health has become the forefront of what we deal with. Medical's become the forefront. And, and really, the issue is, how do we, you know, what services can we provide that will help keep people out of jail? We don't want them sitting in jail. We want to provide the service to keep them out of jail.
Good job.
JB, anything else?
I might suggest that after you have been tomorrow, I would either talk to Tim Internet, the standard.
Oh.
Invite him over to your office and just give him.
Yeah.
Much broader, more detailed explanation so that you can begin the, the communication with that group as far as where, where you're headed and what you're doing.
Yeah, that's, you might want to talk, talk to him right after. We had our new.
Maybe, maybe invite him and then meet with him after, ask him to stay.
Had a conversation with him Friday at the Y C C groundbreaking ceremonies.
Yeah.
We're, we've got something.
Oh, good.
Working with him.
Yeah, you want to keep him positive. So. For the few people that still read that newspaper.
Probably want to talk to the editorial board.
Yeah, yeah. Are, are they, will they come out with editorial still or on occasion?
We had an editorial board that did a favorable piece on us. And but when we, the vital core, when we had that group, it was a very nice.
That's right.
Piece, I think we should, uh, look to that again.
That'd be good. Yeah, okay.
Beyond that, do you, commissioners, have any other questions about the resolution, the ballot language, the timing, the amounts, anything else that might help you?
I think that's pretty much that. We have.
Another meeting at four o'clock about that.
Information map.
Yeah.
No, I don't. Commissioner Bowles?
So we've gone through the entire resolution. It matches the statute and it's all the legal requirements. The biggest thing is this is a formality where we will send, package all of this, send it to the L G's office. And that's the official action that will allow it to be on the ballot. So I've already talked to Craig. We'll be putting that together once we get all the signatures and sending it to him.
Great.
Fisher, would you guys want graphs, pie charts, animations, cartoons, videos, pictures, PowerPoint, anything like that?
Do you have it ready?
So ready to go?
We have some stuff available.
What about what you gave us, when you presented to us last?
We have some of that. Some stuff's been improved. But a lot of, some of it's good, some of it could be better. We just don't have any more available. I'm just thinking if somebody were to pull up this, as in social media, somebody pulls up this presentation, how do you want it to look?
Yeah. I think those slides you showed us would be beneficial for the public. They were to go back and look at that.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I, I agree with the slides and.
Put them down and shape them up a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, cut them down a little bit.
So nothing more than fifteen, twenty minutes? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's probably about right, I'd say.
Okay.
Yeah.
I want to be respectful.
If it runs a little bit over, I, we're not going to cut you off.
But, I mean, if we're, if we're talking two, three minutes, I can do that. But I don't want to be, uh, I will make sure we respect everybody's time, purpose of the meeting.
No, we're.
Et cetera. So if that's too long.
We should, we should, no, I think you'll be good. You know, we may feed you a couple of softball questions.
Okay.
Just so you're prepared for that.
Yeah, I'll take the softball, the hardballs. I'll have Reese there.
He can test it. He can take it. All right, Commissioner Harvey, anything else? Commissioner Bowles? Anything else? Ricky, you got anything?
No, no, I think we're okay. The pie chart looks okay for.
Yeah.
Red on harden.
It's like, we're good.
Okay, good to go. Jonathan?
Average home value, uh, sounds like it's four hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars. So the impact annually to the average home owner is around fifty-five dollars, under fifty-five dollars per year. Lot of, a lot of fun things going on. The state, I was commenting to some of these gentlemen earlier, the Iron County folks down south are building a jail as well. They are not putting it on the ballot. At least that wasn't the intention.
Right. I've heard that.
To put it on the ballot. It, it might be the perfect season to have this on the ballot and just be upfront and center with it. Say, here's what we're doing, this is why, and here's your impact. So I think politically, it puts, it puts everybody in a good spot. Afterwards, if still a need for a jail and it doesn't pass, there's processes that we can.
Then we have some, we have some other options.
Yeah.
I agree.
But it's a good, I think it's a good time just to be straightforward with the residents and make sure that we're using the best tool we have.
Yeah, yeah. Cheapest way to go. Less expensive way to go, I should say. JB, anything else?
We're good.
Okay. All right, thanks. Hope you.
Thank you.
See you in the morning.
Yep.
Thanks. Hey Sheriff, you're planning on.
That fucks fast.
I, yeah. I tell Jonathan Ward every time, this is our box, we're gonna cancel.
You got a new one?
Yeah, he just brought three of them. I'll leave this up here.
No, take that. I got this right.
I don't need them all. I have to.
No, we don't. Look at that. You gonna go take a nap? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's go.
Let's go ways back.
Yeah.
Sorry. What do you want to? You want to pull this up here or?
Sure. You want to put your slides in there.
Oh, you've got slides?
Okay.
Pulling this?
You want to?
Is that me driving here?
Go ahead and drive it.
I'm going to borrow your mouse there too. There you go.
I also got three hard copies printed out here if anybody wants for notes or whatever.
Okay. We'll take them.
It's under Weber County Meeting. And then, yeah, right where your mouse is.
Yep. All right, let's go ahead and get started while he's pulling that up. Welcome everybody for those online. It doesn't look like we have too many people there. This is the 2:00 PM discussion regarding links. Construction Pat Burns, the Verico Village. Is it Brogan Stampick?
That's my wife.
Yeah, that's me.
Okay, that's you.
Yep.
Okay, there's Commissioner Harvey. I'm Commissioner, Commissioner Volos. Why don't we start? We've got with us Ashley Ton, Gary Myers. Let's start right down here and introduce. I know.
Randy Giudano.
We know Randy, but.
Yeah.
Oh, hell. Oh, yeah.
Tom Barnes.
Christopher Crockett.
Oh.
I should introduce Chris. Go ahead.
Brogan Stampick.
Okay. We were Giles. Jake Stampick.
Alster, Riley Skinner. Wes Hanson.
Okay.
Morgan Miles. Morgan Olson.
Light Trees.
Welcome everyone. Did we miss anybody?
Yep, we did. There they go.
Okay. Tell us who you are.
I'm Mike. Your name? This is my wife. Lizzy.
Welcome. Okay. All right, so Rogan, are you, since you're listed here, do you want to start?
Um, is it okay? I think my husband Jake.
We'll have Jake do it.
Yeah.
I can go through stuff, so. All right, great. All right, so I am one of the homeowners in the Care Village.
Okay.
So you can see our agenda here. We can jump right into the actual slides though, so. Really, the purpose of wanting to meet with you all is to discuss some of the issues. If you go to the next chart, please. Discuss some of the issues with the Care Village Phase One. There's a number of aspects that are incomplete with that subdivision. It's causing a lot of us fairly significant issues. And so we're hoping to talk with you about some of those shortcomings that we're faced with and hopefully get some help there. We'd also like to talk a little bit about Phase Two. We understand the plans for that have changed a little bit from what we all initially understood it to be. And just as kind of an upfront matter here, the information in this slide deck is not all inclusive. I just tried to hit the high points and kind of the major areas that are are causing us the most concern. So.
Okay.
Go to the next chart, please, in the background. So you can see the picture here. This is the picture that was out at the main road there at the entrance to the subdivision, so. You can see that there was a number of green space area. There was a fishing pond. Originally, it was planned to have thirteen homes in Phase One and then eighteen in Phase Two. I think that's what all of us understood when we were buying our homes out there, that that's about what this would look like. And then working, a lot of us worked with Link Construction, and it was our understanding that this is what we were signing up to, essentially what we were.
Thirteen in Phase One and how many?
Eighteen in Phase Two, yeah.
How many, so how many are in Phase One now?
Sixteen, I believe, in Phase One, and then in Phase Two, they're talking like a hundred and seven or something like that.
Okay.
So fairly significant change there.
Yeah.
So ultimately, where the subdivision currently is, we're a far cry from what we were promised, from what is shown in the plans. Like I said, it's causing us a lot of issues. So you go to the next chart, we'll just dive right into it. So the first issue that we're dealing with is related to secondary water. So all the properties out there say that they have secondary water. The plans show that there's an eight acre pond. Part of that is a large irrigation reservoir. Part of it is a smaller irrigation plant, and we'll see that when we look at a few later charts. Ultimately, the system is inadequate for what is needed out there. The issues that we're facing, I kind of broke it down into two topics, one being pressurization. So as it currently stands, the system out there is gravity fed from that pond. It's just a sloped main pipe that then the homeowners.
Sorry. Is just to be clear for me, is that eight ground acres or eight cubic feet of water?
It's great. Eight ground acres.
Okay, thank you. That's a lot. There's a lot of difference between eight cubic feet of water and eight acres like that.
Yeah, sorry, I should have cleared.
No, that's okay. I took it. It's a water issue. I didn't. That's okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, like I said, it's a gravity fed system. Homeowners have to supply a pump to connect into that if they want to pressurize the water. To date, I believe two homeowners have burned up pumps because of lack of water, which we'll get into on the next chart, but the thing I want to highlight here is the two letters that are attached there are indicating that culinary water would be supplied to this area. Or sorry, no, is culinary, that they would, they agreed to provide culinary water as long as there was a functioning secondary water system. And then later on, it also indicated in that letter that if there were more than two lots on that subdivision, that it would be a pressurized system. Here we are with sixteen homes and it's not pressurized. So we have that issue there. Next chart is going to go into kind of what I alluded to with the supply and demand and burning up pumps. So both this year and last year, we don't get secondary water available to where we can actually water our yards until early June at the earliest. Last year, it was mid-June. Some of us lost fairly big portions of our yard and had to replant. This year, it was early June that the water was available for use.
So what's the water source? Is it West Weaver? Or West Warren Canal?
Warren Irrigation.
Okay, it's Warren Irrigation. What's he doing? Water shares? He putting into the pond?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's currently two homes out of the sixteen that are using the secondary. There's four other homes that have finished landscaping, but they're all using culinary water to water their landscaping. Like I said, with not having water on until early June, those of us that are using secondary, we're still having to use culinary to keep our yards alive until secondary is available. But this year, we've been running out of water between every water turn, just with two houses using the secondary water.
Two houses of a kind.
Yeah, only two houses connected. So out of curiosity, I wanted to run an analysis to figure out how much water was actually coming in versus what was coming out. And so I, I took measurements on the July sixteenth water turn. And just based on change in volume, I determined there's about four hundred fifty thousand gallons that came in in that water turn. Based on talking with the people who have landscape yards and how they water and the size of those properties, I estimate that we would need about one point four million gallons every water turn for sixteen homes to be on the secondary water. So that says we're, we're close to a million gallons short every water turn in order to supply secondary water for all sixteen houses out there that claim they have secondary water. So there's a problem in and of itself, not in, not only in inadequacy of how the system is designed with lack of pressurization and that type of stuff, but purely from a supply standpoint, there's not enough water coming into that pond to even supply for two homes, let alone sixteen. So.
So what did you get in terms of documentation for water rights when you bought the house?
As far as I know, it was all just what was within our contracts and within what was documented in the county of its saying that we had secondary water. There was nothing, to my knowledge, I don't know about anybody else, that saw something about water turns.
As the water district, I said on the board, we had him put eight shares. Warren Irrigation shares. Jeff Pales has sold them in there in the secretary of the company.
Right.
So they're entitled, they make shares every week or every eight days, they get that each year to go.
So the subdivision owns the eight shares.
Right.
The HOA or?
The HOA, and we had Jeff Pales hold them. Because we were scared that maybe Pat or at that time, I think Justin was even involved, wouldn't pay the bill on the shares and they'd go, you know, they'd lose it. So we had Jeff hold them in there.
Okay.
And the HOA's has to pay every year the, you know.
For the eight shares.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's what, that's what they got.
Yeah.
And at that time, like you said, I, I thought it was only thirteen homes, the first part of the seven years. So at that time, that's kind of what the board figured they had to set aside to water their loans for them thirteen homes was eight shares, and the shares are half hour long.
Right.
So they'll get four hours of water into that. And I think it's.
Is that every seven days?
Every eight and a half days, I believe it is now.
Nine, nine days, I think.
Okay, all right.
And they get, I think, five and a half second feet of water.
It, it does vary, and that's one of the things I noticed is from terms of, it varies.
It's moss and you know how the.
Yeah, no, I'm pretty familiar with that ditch.
Yeah. You are, and the last few weeks has been great, but there was a time during the summer when there was bossy and he was cut in half. You know, we all know that.
Yeah, right. Yeah, okay, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, so the next chart will just kind of show some snippets from the plan, so you can see on the left there is what is pulled from the plans. You can see the irrigation reservoir and then that smaller triangle in the lower left there is the irrigation pond. And then the actual pictures there, so the top right photo is looking into the irrigation pond. There's a canal there that then kind of jets into that pond. And then the lower two pictures are the, the reservoir itself. So it looks like a fair bit of water there, and so you realize that there's a bird standing on the bottom. So it's only six, eight inches deep. So the, the other, the other issue is there's not much height discrepancy between that inlet pipe and the outlet pipe for the pond. So even if they were to get that a lot fuller, that inlet pipe is going to be a, a problem. Just because you're only going to be able to get that water level so high because of that. So next chart is going to show some more about the green space and planning with irrigation there. So there was supposed to be a a pump and irrigation control box that was to supply the water for the trees and that type of stuff that were supposed to be planted for the green space. And as you can see in the actual picture, there's nothing there, so. Before I move on to the next topic, are there any other questions on secondary water?
No, so you, you understood it was all gravity flow? That he never intended to pressurize it?
That, that was what I understood when I was buying the home. However, when I found this letter that was filed with the county, and we can go back a couple slides and pull that letter up if you want, it said it was seized pressurizing.
When we approved that subdivision, we had it on the plans that it would be pressurized system. Anything over two homes required a pressurized system. Forty to seventy pounds at least.
Okay.
And it went on and went on for a few months. And the county, okay, the gravity flow system, it did never come back and talk to the water. They come in here and somehow or another, they got it finagled around that the gravity flow was fine. We never did agree to that.
The just, the water district.
Water district, never did.
Okay.
It was done in here in the county by someone. And I was told, when I come in to talk to him about the county, I was told that an engineer brought it in. And I was told, when I come in to talk to him about the county, I was told that an engineer brought it in, a licensed engineer, said it would work, so they had to accept it. So we tried it.
Okay.
But it don't work.
Right.
And uh, you know, but we did originally have one that it would be pressurized and somebody in here changed it. That's the thing, that's the reason I'm here is to find out what legal stand we have. You know what I mean? We, we always said we weren't gonna supply them any water, any culinary. When you get four or five families built home in there and ready to move in, we kind of felt as a board, we had to give them the culinary water. But then again, we was getting promised that this was gonna get changed within a year. So we give some culinary water and then we ended up giving them all culinary water. And we probably should have not done that. We probably should have, and I feel sorry for these folks because they invested in a home. And we were, we didn't want a supply of water like Jolly did in West Weaver, if you know about that subdivision, he just very released it.
We know about it, yeah. Well, that was, yeah, that, again, we don't have any control. You can give culinary hookups when you want to. Our typical stance is we leave that between the secondary and the primary, the culinary system.
Well, I understand that now, but at that time. The county dropped the ball on keeping that pressurized and, and I realized that I don't think any of you guys were in office or whatever, and I'm not. Somebody dropped the ball in here to county anyway, that's what I was told.
Okay.
You know, that they okayed the gravity flow system, that it would work.
Gary, do anything about that?
This subdivision ironically was approved and in place right about the time that I started.
Okay.
And so the previous person from the engineering department that was over this is no longer here.
Okay.
Ironically, the previous planner that was over this is no longer here as well either.
Hmm.
So as far as who made the decision to change from gravity, from pressurized backwards to gravity. Vice versa, I, to be honest with you, I'm not, I'm not sure who or how that decision.
And it's not personal, we don't operate like that.
Yeah. Co- co- correct, so over the past short, especially short little while, there's been, you know, there's been a lot of lessons.
But we've inherited some.
We, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so just, that's the main reason I wanted to find out kind of the timeline.
Correct.
So this is, this is approved by our timeframe.
Yeah, it was before you, you guys.
Unfortunately, you know, I guess the good news is we would never allow that to happen today.
Yeah.
That would be between the culinary system and the secondary system, and then we'd have to have an agreement for both before we give any building permits.
Yeah.
So, but anyway, that's done deal now, okay?
And so moving on to the next chart then, um, so issue number two is more related just to the overall aesthetics of the neighborhood as far as what was planned versus where we currently stand. Um, so there is supposedly an HOA um, in this subdivision. If there are bylaws and CCRs that are filed with the county. Um, and of course, within that HOA, there's supposed to be, you know, requirements for homes and landscape and all that type of stuff to make it a nice neighborhood. Um, as of right now, there is still no function to that HOA. We can't seem to get any traction with that. Um, and you'll see in the next charts here on some of the pictures of what it looks like, but. Um, you know, overgrown weeds everywhere, some of that's due to not being able to put in yards because of no secondary water. Some of it is due to open space that was supposed to be landscaped and it's not, and some of it is, is just flat out neglect. Um, you know, trash in trailers parked on streets for extended periods of time, things like that. So. The next chart just kind of gives a couple examples of, of what we're dealing with, what it looks like. Um.
Who runs the HOA?
Yeah, we, we, we can get traction with it. We can't find out who is supposed to be the president. We, we can't find anything out about it. I, we spoke with Pat Burns, um, a week ago, two weeks ago, um, so he still holds the HOA, just himself, he's the developer or owner or whatnot. And is, is saying, hey, we can turn this over to you right now, but it's gonna cost you as a neighborhood tons of money to put all these things in. You know, wait for me, promise this, promise that, I'll live up to my end of the, of the deal, but you know, it's predicated on. Other things, other developments that have nothing to do with our, with, with it, right? So he holds it and he sits on solely on the HOA. There's just nothing. Nothing being done with it.
Okay, so he hasn't turned it over to the.
Correct.
To the homeowners. Okay, alright. Is, isn't there a legal requirement that be turned over at some point in time? There usually bylaws put in place once there's.
But there's probably something recorded on each of the plots that they're coming next, and so a group of homeowners could have a class of action located. Yeah, action against the developer or something.
Right.
But um, I'd have to look as far.
Okay, alright.
And not, not to speak for everyone here, um, you know, with the conversation, it's, you know, we could do that and we could force that, right? But. We, you know, the way it's been promised to us is these things, the green spaces would be finished and then we would just take over maintenance for the HOA. And so that's kind of what we're expecting and we would be open to that, but we'd like to see these things implemented before, so we're not, you know, stuck with having to just develop all.
And you'll, you just wanna do the maintenance stuff.
Absolutely, and you'll see in later charts here that there was actually money set aside in the escrow account for. Stuff like green spaces and walking trails and stuff like that, but there've been some releases in there. Like for landscape, for example, there was thirty-six or thirty-seven K that was released. Um, and, and I mean, you can see, we don't have anything out there and we can go to the next chart, it might even be, it's not a chart that talks about that. Um. I guess a few more, so, um, anyway, per, per the plan, like I said, we were supposed to have. Walking paths out there, lamps along the, the street, raised beds for landscaping, trees. Um, shrubs, things like that. They're supposed to be irrigation run for keeping those plants alive. That's what the controller box and pump we looked at earlier for. Um, again, you know, if we go to the next chart, you'll see none of that is implemented. So on the left there, you can see some of the examples of the details for the beds. Um, the different types of trees that were planned to be out there. You can see some of the lamp posts. Um, and again, it's just weeds out there.
Okay.
Next chart just shows more of the same. And then the next chart is getting into the escrow. Um, account that I was talking about. So, um, this escrow account is titled the Vicaro Village Phase One Escrow Account. It currently shows that there's a little over eighty-nine thousand in there. Um, the items here, the street signs, asphalt sidewalks, that type of stuff, this is, there's still supposedly money there for that stuff. Um, in the case of the second bullet there, that sub bullet on the two thousand dollar expenditure for a temporary turnaround. That was somehow released, yet there is no temp turnaround at the end of the street for that. Um, there's stuff in there for storm drains, uh, secondary water, it shows that there was thirteen K and then seven and a half K expended for power supplies for pumps and pump systems. And again, there's nothing out there for that. And then the landscaping, like I talked a second ago. All of those expenditures are showing as released, but as you've seen in the pictures, we have absolutely nothing from that.
Hmm.
So there's multiple red flags on the releases in that escrow account that the dollars that are in there are not being used for what they were planned for. Um, so significant concerns there. Uh, next chart. It's just shows the temporal here now, I was talking about, you can see that it's, it's not there. Uh, next chart going into issue three. So these are just promises that a lot of us were told by the developer slash link construction. Um, so with the pond, we were told there are gonna be walking trails around that bridges, you know, that we could use the pond for kayaking and that there'd be fish in there and other water recreation. Uh, some people were told about a five acre equestrian park out there. Um, and then just the overarching issue, um, which I know some people have dealt with, with trying to sell their homes. Um, is just that the properties are not being up kept to where it's degrading the value of the surrounding properties. So. That's a, I mean, your concern. Uh, moving on to issue number four then, um, this is just related to phase two considerations. So as I said at the beginning. As we understood that we're gonna be eighteen homes in phase two, uh, now it's looking like there's gonna be a hundred and seven. So to us, it feels like kind of a bit of a bait and switch type situation. Um, and we, we have concerns for a myriad of reasons with that, one of it being that that many additional homes is gonna almost double the number of homes in West Warren. Uh, but on top of that, our street will be one of the two ways in and out of that neighborhood. So what is currently a very kid-friendly, family-friendly street, and we, we have tons of kids in this neighborhood. That's gonna quickly go away when you've got that additional load of traffic coming along there. And I can pretty much guarantee that if people drive like they do everywhere else, they're gonna be going a lot more than twenty-five on that road. So. We have safety concerns from that standpoint.
Although we haven't, we haven't approved phase two, have we?
That's my knowledge.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so, and then related to phase two and performance, link construction um, is associated with phase two. And the best way I know to put it is past performance is the best indicator of future performance. So what we've seen on phase one. Uh, I think we can pretty much anticipate happening on phase two, which means that we'll be in, in for a, a fun time. So. Moving on to the next chart then, uh, so really what, what we're coming to you for is we're, we're looking for, for help here. Um, ultimately, we want what we were promised when we all bought our homes. Um, we would request that phase one be complete before any further progress or consideration is made in relation to phase two. Um, we would ask that there be some investigation into those escrow account expenditures. Um, and that there be any sort of action taken uh, for any fraudulent withdrawals from that account. Um, cause clearly it did not go to our uh, subdivision. Secondary water, of course, is a huge concern. Um, we would request that the developers and engineers work on implementing a, a working solution out there. Um, something that would provide all of our homes the secondary water that currently shows our homes should have. Um, and just overall that you would reconsider what phase two is looking to be. Um, kind of based on the things that I've highlighted here and the concerns that we have. Um, and that it would be something that would align closer to what we understood at the beginning of what phase two would be instead of what it's looking more like. Um, and then just lastly, you know, it, it sounds like a lot you're familiar with the area out there, but. We would gladly have anybody come out there and look at this with us. I'd be more than happy to walk around with anybody, show you the areas that we're running into problems with. You know, anything like that, you know, it's sometimes seeing it for yourself is the best way to just to get an idea of, of what we're dealing with. So. That summarizes what I had in the slides. Um, I guess, any questions, any?
Nah. Steve? Is everybody to call Rover to come up? So give us the status on this. I don't, have you, have you gone over this with planning?
The Carol Village number one.
The Carol Village. We got escrow concerns, we've got concerns that uh, on secondary water.
Yeah.
That was a lot.
I wasn't aware of this meeting. I just was watching the past couple of minutes.
Oh, glad you came on.
Met anybody in here, maybe I have a phone or anything, but haven't spoken to this group about any of that stuff. Um, my understanding is Vicaro Village, there were some amendments that were made. There used to be some common area that was supposed to be provided, but the open space, since that amendment was agricultural open space, that's what they show on record. Um, which means that there really isn't any common area improvements, whether or not the developer. Both of you guys, there will be common improvements, obviously we can't control, but I ca- I can, I'm happy to show you the recorded plat. Um, which I'm sure many of you are familiar.
How many lots in phase one?
Phase one has, let's see. Fifteen? Sixteen lots?
Sixteen, okay, that's confirmed. And phase two has not been approved?
No.
Okay.
Maybe it was phase two, yeah.
Okay, alright.
Um, but yeah, just going into this meeting cold, um, I, I know that there are some improvements that are required. And then there was a trail along the main. Road that was supposed to be done. Um, but other than that, since the amendment, I don't know. Off the top of my head, I don't know what improvements are required to be installed. Uh, I, I think it is pretty minimal. Because the open space is intended to be primarily agricultural space.
Okay. Alright, well, appears the sec- at least in my mind, the secondary water is a big issue. And again, we don't have any ability to, private waters, private water, and how these guys allow that or not is up to them, but.
Well, part of the problem might be the farm ball, because we didn't make and put in a decent pond.
Yeah.
Uh, we was kind of in the impression as a board that. That pond would be governed by the county. And all they done is like he said, they went out and scraped a little dirt out. It's a big pond. But it don't, between the evaporation and the sub, you know. But eight chairs goes in there is not, not enough. So we've started to make and do, now we're even gonna start making them line in these ponds. You know, which maybe it was kind of our fault that we didn't make and put in, but we were all new at this. We was counting on the county helping a lot, you know? But I think the county ought to come up with a standard on some kind of irrigation point. If they have to put an irrigation pond, it either has to be lined and then covered with rocks. You know, or cement, and cement would be the best. To hold the volume of water they need to, like he says, the water, the ground's pretty left. Level out there, so there's not gonna be a lot of flow. So if you go into a pond, you're gonna have to pump it out.
Right.
Get it out of there and into there.
There's no elevation.
Ground is just, so.
That ain't gonna be squat.
They're only getting a yard of the water because like he says, it comes in the same line to the way it's on. So as soon as the heads off, it really dislays, or perp to her back, and there's even that. So a part of it's kind of our fault. We really didn't want nothing to do with this. Of secondary water, but the county kind of dumped that on our laps, you know, years ago.
Yeah.
So.
Well, yeah, we don't care where the secondary water comes from, we just require it.
Right.
And what we do is make sure, again, we can't dictate, we're not in the secondary water business. What we can do, and again, between the culinary company and the secondary company, is to require a pressure test that we've just done on a couple of occasions. But is there enough pressure? Is there PSI coming out of a pond or whether it's a well, whatever it is? You've got enough PSI to supply to the number of lots that you have.
Yeah, and we really didn't want to be in the, had a secondary business either.
Right.
Warren irrigation don't, so we kind of got stuck with it, but. And you know as well as I do, there's a lot of alkaline out in that ground. So if they dig into the ponds, they put that water in there and that alkaline comes up in that water and then they pump it out on the lawns, it kills it anyway.
Yeah.
That uh, salt water, yeah. You know, that secondary system with Randy Mary running over there in Fester Farms now. We got a couple of guys in Fester that's complaining that that water is killing the grass. Cause that used to be a dairy farm pond. And they just converted it over into a. And they're pumping, the claims are pumping all the urine and alkaline and everything else out on through the seconders. I don't know. But they do have a pressurized system.
Yeah.
Bill, with Bill, when he built that system down seventy-nine hundred, we went through there and he talked to Gene Livas. That had them leach lines in the ground. And they had two, three inch pump down under, a lot of water. They pumped a lot of water. I mean, they couldn't afford a pump, so Bill was gonna pay the power bill and. Put that into his subdivision, but we told him, I told him that it wouldn't work, because I tried that on my lawn with a surface drill.
Right.
I said it won't work, no. But I was told by the county at that time that that's secondary water. So we couldn't stop it. That's the problem. I mean, we got guys that's dumping stuff into a ditch, pumping out of the ditch. As far as the county's concerned, that's secondary, just like you said. The source, you don't care where they get it. It's gotta be good water.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's gotta be wet water.
Maybe we also need to look at how we're.
Right.
Okay.
How do we solve the problem, Mr. Chair, for these folks here in rural? Well, the first thing we need to do, Steve and Chris, let's look at that escrow. See what we've got and look at the requirements under that escrow agreement. It's probably our first bet. Um.
But I do have a question. You, you're saying that the current plat doesn't show any of the green space. However, when a lot of us were building and closing on our homes, it did. So a- at what point in time do we get what we thought we were getting when we closed on our homes versus just having the rug pulled out from under us?
Yeah, Steve, can you answer why the green space they're talking about didn't, doesn't exist?
Yeah, just pulling up the uh, the subdivision plat, when that amendment. So. So. So there is a group of people that signed the plat. Um, and if, if you bought the property before the plat was amended, you would have owned some of that common area and had some right to that common area. Um, and before that plat was amended. We, the county wouldn't have allowed the plat to record unless all the owners agreed to amend it that way. And so uh, we got a whole list of people that signed that plat, uh, own property at that time. We just have to verify and and we can't, we can't verify what, what somebody sells you, obviously. We can only verify that they're going through the process in the right way.
So I don't know. Are aware of this, but that plat, some of us didn't sign. Pat instead annexed us out of the subdivision and went ahead with the.
You can see that in the registered space as well. The Wilsons are no longer a part of the HOA because they didn't sign it. I signed it because I was told that it was to add an extra house. Someone's extra house, I signed it. I didn't know it was getting rid of everything else along with it.
He also had three of us already under contract on these homes before they were planted. Before it was approved. So that he was off.
He's, yeah, he sold the property. Before there was any kind of approval.
Okay.
So that was our house, their house.
Was your home built or he sold you a lot?
Sold us a lot. He put money down on a lot, had a contract before anything was done. Then he went out and was getting these signatures, collecting signatures to then get an approval. Okay, for, for the law.
Got it. Okay, well, Commissioner Bowles, any questions, comments?
I don't think so.
So we've got your request for action. You're just going through this just off the top of my head. I don't think anything you've asked for is unreasonable. I can't promise anything, but obviously the escrow, we can work on. I think we need to work with the water company, the culinary water company. I don't know if there's any uh, possible solutions to your secondary water shortage. Putting some pressure on him via whatever he wants to do in phase two. And also the escrow agreement, which I think we're happy to do. Um, you, you know, so again, as Steve said, you know, we, we can't take any responsibility or liability on what was promised and what was ultimately delivered. What we can make sure of is anything that he promised the county and we have on his signature. If it's not complete like the escrow, then we can we have some teeth in that, but in terms of the green space, et cetera, um, you know, i- in my opinion. Uh, being a real estate guy, you, you may have a cause of action, but that would be a personal cause of action, not come from the county. I don't know. Chris, here's the legal advice, not me.
And you stay in the room.
Okay. So let me just say this, uh, we, you know, take your concern seriously. Appreciate you bringing these forwards. I'd rather hear about them. When this first happened, understanding a lot of this took place before anybody in this room, most people in this room were even here. Um, but who's our point of contact? Is it you, Jake, or?
Uh, yeah, probably me or my wife.
Yeah, I made the appointment, set this up or whatever, but yeah, he has been doing all the work as far as putting the.
So when you step out, make sure that Christie at the front desk has your contact information. We can be in touch. We can kind of keep you informed. It'll either be Rick, John, or Steve in the back of the room here that will be kind of giving you updates or questions as we proceed around.
You're kind of the unofficial HOA president.
Yeah. Yeah.
Really, I mean, that's.
I'll put that on my resume.
But yeah, this really needs to get in the hands of the HOA sooner than later. And you guys need to elect.
Won't be happy birthday.
Elect your board.
That's alright. I don't, I don't need a lot.
Christian is too, because Pat says, well, I'll do these things, but I gotta get phase two in.
I, I've said, I've said directly, thanks to Randy Gier Downo here, he talked to me how many, two or three times on this, as long as five years or.
Yeah, or more.
And I've had discussion with Pat. He's assured me. So now, it's alright, I got footing underneath me, because I can go to him and say, you told me this. And then I can say, we had a group of people here that's telling me something different.
And I also mentioned that in phase two, he plans to use the same pond.
Not anymore. I don't think that works.
Yeah, it's not working for the.
Not anymore. So it's alright.
Well, and I think that's.
Sorry, you guys had so much, this is, this, this stinks.
And I, I think that's partly, you know, you said you wish you would have known about this sooner. We would have brought it to everybody sooner had we known that his promises were empty.
Right.
But we were trying to give him an opportunity to follow through on what he said and he just.
I have called Felix for two years. Every month, for two years and telling him, because he was the one that was head over the subdivision.
Felix was?
Felix. And I got nowhere. It was a phone call and that's as far as it got. You went nowhere else, because I'd call to try to figure out what's going on, what's, what's going with our subdivision. Oh, uh, we're working on it. We're, you know, this, it's a slow process to make sure everything's done right. And it's far from that.
Others of us called Felix too, when we started having the secondary water issues where we couldn't get any water and it, there wasn't any information or any, anything. It was just like, wow.
He, he suggested, well, do I call Pat? And I said, well, no, not, don't call Pat, because that's where the issue lies.
Yeah, we've tried calling him first and, yeah, if we call Pat about the water issues, he ignores phone calls, won't return texts. We take screenshots of us trying to get ahold of him and he can't. And if he do get ahold of him, he lies to you. So, yeah.
And that has come to a couple of board meetings in the last six months at the district. He has promised now a little over a year that he's got an eighty thousand dollar pump coming on, all put together in a little building. It's been over a year. It's been close to being.
For this pond?
For this pond.
Because you have enough water, though. With a, well, if it's lined and it doesn't.
Imagine to him that he probably needs dredge upon now, you know, let it dry out, dredge it and line it.
Probably needs to line.
Said, no, it's not gonna do it well.
Okay.
But he.
We'll have that discussion.
He has said he's gonna fix it.
Okay. We'll have that conversation with Pat before we approve anything else, right, Rick? Um, well, I appreciate you folk. Anything else? Anybody else have anything? Don't want to put anybody off.
No, I, I think just the last thing. So not everybody from the subdivision was able to be here, but we did get everybody to sign. This is all that they agree with what was presented in this packet here. So.
You've done good today. You guys have done good.
Yeah.
We'll try to make this so it's not wasting your time.
Uh, we, we appreciate you.
We'll get to the bottom of this. Uh, again, some of this is out of our control. I don't want to promise you that we're going to be able to cure everything you brought forth, but anything that is within our control. And especially going here forward, we've changed a lot of our policies and how we deal with the, over the past few years, just not, you know, because of this and because of culinary secondary water issues that we feel is critical, we're just not allowing that to happen until we know that you've got secondary water that will service every, whatever number of lots you've got on there. And we encourage the culinary companies not to hook them up until that happens. So. Alright. Alright, thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch. Give my, give your contact information to Kristen. No, uh. See you, Randy.
See you later.
Thanks for coming. You better eat more of this.
Oh, Gage, I've had to wear my shirt. You're watching me.
Good are you? Yeah.
The sheriff's council.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we should be good. Yeah.
For your reading pleasure.
I have the fifth one.
Okay.
Yeah.
I told him the last time he brought those in, I was, I was off sugar at the time.
Yeah, right.
I was watching everyone eat.
These are.
Oh, yeah. But I'm not today.
No, you don't have an eye back here. What is, what are they? My saw shit. Your butthole, so they want to grab you out like that. But okay.
We're not muted.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. They can hear me. They can. Oh, I gave.
Stan Lee.
How are we doing today?
Wow. I see you gave some of that.
No, that's, did you, listen, I don't get a while every day. Or, or I don't, I don't.
Commissioner.
That's good.
Chair, I'm gonna be presenting.
Come on over here, right? What's that one of? I have a. Reaction here.
Okay.
Scott, I got your text.
So what is? This is discussing improvements and issuing building permits before individuals. Oh, this is on our. Install, okay. Alright, let's start the two thirty session regarding subdivision improvement exception. Charlie's not here. Rick, you're here. Sean's here. Stan is here. There he is. Gary Myers, here's Steve Burton, Chris Crockett. Ashton, so who, what's we have here? Ashley here. And John and Chain. What brings you here?
Eric. Don't forget Eric, alright. The ambassador down there at the end of the table.
I just thought maybe you get, hadn't seen us in a couple of weeks.
Flattered. We missed you.
Alright. Rick, go ahead.
So Commissioners, you asked us to look at possible language to issue permits, uh, building permits specifically, uh, before public improvements are fully installed. Um, i.e. dealing more with water and sewer.
Right.
Infrastructure.
How'd you get all this done with all the other crap we've been dealing with?
We spent a lot of time on this. Um, and we sat down with engineering. We looked at other municipalities. Frankly, there's not a real good option out there. Um, this isn't something that is typically done.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, as we looked at it from the engineering and planning side of it, um, we have a lot of reservations uh, about doing this. Um, we didn't see a lot of good examples out there for the public from other municipalities to um, glean some information off of. So we kind of went from ground zero. Um, our preference would be not to do this, but if you do consider doing this, uh, because you did ask us to come up with some language. We put some really tight parameters um, upon this. Um, the first one being um, in the language under B is that we specifically look at this being a joint partnership between the county and the developer, or the county and the service provider. Because we don't want this happening carte blanche.
Right.
Um, we see this being a problem down the road if we do this just to allow these exceptions, because they would probably be coming in quite a bit if we didn't have specific language in there. So that would be our first requirement um, in there. The second one is the, well, the very first caveat under this is that we only allow it for footing and foundation only. And that's under item BA, is that it only is for footing and foundation only. And then under um, BB in there, we talk about that we enter into some type of development agreement. Um, so we can put in more specific parameters associated with this, because we're um, we, we want this to just be a rule not used very often, because we don't see this county developer partnership happening too often with sewer infrastructure or water infrastructure. So uh, we would have more control over that and it wouldn't be happening too often. Another thing we look at in this is that um, we have um, the escrow for these improvements that they are taking care of and that there'd be a notice recorded um, on the plat for each one of these lots to let the property owner know what's happening associated with this. So that's looking at if we do allow some type of exception for this to happen. That's the first part of the draft language that we have before you. Um, under down lower, when you get to A one, we put in, this is some language that we would like to see from staff since we're going to be doing if, if you do consider doing this, that we look at some language for um, some construction contingency, because we found that there's problems as far as the amount that is put in for the escrow, for the improvements, when it comes time to install. Because oftentimes they don't put it in right at the beginning and then inflation happens. And then we don't have the sufficient funds in place to cover those improvements. We have the ten percent warranty. But we're recommending that you consider some type of ten percent contingency on that so that we have those funds in place. And then we have some additional language in here that if it does expire, that um, or it comes into default, that it either, we take those and put it in, or they have some type of new escrow that comes in to meet those um rising costs at that period of time to take care of it. So those are some of the basic things that we have in the ordinance um for you to consider. Um, I try not to read through a bullet, bullet by bullet, but that's kind of a synopsis. But our gut feel is that this probably, this hasn't been done very much in other communities. Um, and it's, uh, it's a risk that, you know, we take to do it, but you're given a charge to look at some draft language. And so those are, that's our best stab at it is um, those requirements that we put in there between um, A, B, C, D, and E, and that should be an F.
Okay. Commissioner Harvey, you had a question?
No, I'm scratching my head. I'm sorry. John?
Rick, thank you very much for obviously running us up the flagpole and, and digging into the details and you know, we, we do not want to put the county in a bad position, especially if there's not a precedent. So, you know, I would, with all due respect, probably just withdraw our request. And if it's, if it's not been done quite a bit and we're not you know, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel and put you guys in a bad position and it looks like it's gone there and that doesn't feel right to us either. So I would just thank you for the time you put into this, but I don't want to take it any further if it's, if it's gonna cause stress on the, on the county. We're just trying to help the whole situation and it's hard enough getting this pipeline built, much less houses. That's truly secondary, so we'll back out.
Well, and, and I'm not saying you do that, but
I, I realize that.
We just, we want to be able to help and
Sure.
we always, planning always wants and engineering wants to be game players, but we see some risk associated with this and we just want to be upfront.
Sure, sure. With, with. Well, my personal opinion is I think with this, with, you know, footings and foundation. I, you know, I don't think, and again, I view it as that partnership in this particular situation. I don't believe it really puts the county in harm's way, but John, it's, you know.
If, you, you know.
If you don't want to push it, then.
Yeah. These guys on this side of the table, we work with every day and they do such a great job and I do not want to cause them any more stress than I already do. We're, we're doing.
Look at this guy. Look at what you've done to their hairline.
About to stitch hair, okay?
Yeah.
In, in all seriousness, though. This whole issue that we had, that we're still in the middle of, the number of phone calls that we got, the number of text messages over the last couple of weeks, it's been an absolute nightmare.
On which issue?
Uh, the Terry.
Terry Meadows.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It is unbelievable. And it, it shows even if you record something against a property, they didn't care. Um, you know, there's, we're put in such a difficult, uh, difficult position and the county, at the end of the day, was for, I mean, we. At the end of the day was for, I mean, with, the pressure was so intense for us to be ones to take the responsibility for it. And uh after all of this, Brad Lynch has now given us notice that he intends to sue us. So it's just, it was aw- it was absolutely awful. So.
Yeah.
I'm completely, please know, I'm completely separating it out from nearly all of it.
We, we have so much work ahead of us to do and we don't need to make it any harder than it already is. And we would just respectfully back out of this one and we'll just keep trying, we'll keep doing our job and we appreciate you guys.
I like your stab at this though.
Yeah.
And we can keep it on the books and if you as Commissioners tell us to do it, we're, we're ready to go. Um we, we got stuff there for you to consider, but um and John, you want to take it off the table? You know. I think we just leave it on the table for now and if something comes up or a situation.
That's kind of how I am, because because of the shortened construction season, especially on, in our particular circumstance. I mean, we're not Davis County or Utah County, they don't even know what mountains are down there.
Yeah.
They don't have any, but I think that we need to, with the shortened construction season there, especially at the top of powder mountain. You know, there's maybe, that's where I was leaning when the first thing, I, I'm, I'm uh.
You know, we even got it down to one guy, it was funny, the other two were like, well, we probably won't actually start.
Okay.
So we had one guy who wanted to, to permit, but I, it's not worth the, the stress.
So, okay.
He'll live. Okay, I'm actually okay with that, but I would say keep it on the table in case it comes up again and if anybody. You know, John wakes up one morning and says all of a sudden he's got six people ready to go and. You can ask in a nice way, which he always does. Okay, anything else?
No, no, we, we have it ready to go, so you give us the trigger and we'll put it on.
Good, thanks for coming. Thanks for being here.
Rick, thank you for.
We don't have a tree.
No.
Definitely pride, I'll give you that.
You want to get Cortland and Mendoza up here?
Yeah, or did, did you want to talk to anybody between that time?
I'm just gonna talk to these guys for five minutes about our.
Yeah.
Augen Valley.
Okay, good, John texted me earlier and.